We're ready. All right, at this time I'd like to call the regularly scheduled City of Taft Planning Commission meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, March third, two thousand twenty-one. We are meeting at the City Hall Council Chambers at two oh nine East Kern Street, Taft, California. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number N dash two-nine dash two-zero, Taft Planning Commission meetings will be held in the following manner. Effective November fourth, two thousand twenty, Planning Commission meetings will be providing seating for six attendees on a first come, first served basis. Attendees must wear masks in order to enter the building. Meetings will continue to be livestreamed and public comment will continue to be received per the city's policy in response to the Governor's Executive Order N dash two-nine dash two-zero. Item one, in order to protect our constituents, city officials and staff, all public meetings until further notice will be held with limited attendees in order to allow for social distancing. Planning Commission meetings will be livestreamed in real time to our YouTube channel by searching for City of Taft City Clerk on YouTube or at this link, HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot YouTube dot com slash user slash City of Taft. Item two, public comments for Planning Commission meetings will be accepted in the following manner. In person, public comments will be accepted up until three P M. in the day of the meeting. Written comments may be dropped off into the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@whymayfield@cityoftaft.org, made by phone to the City Clerk's office at six-six-one-seven-six-three-one-two-two-two. The comments received will be read into the record. Should a member of the public prefer to speak during the live portion of the meetings, they shall contact the City Clerk prior to the time listed above and provide a contact phone number. Be available during the meeting times of four P M. to five P M. And will be contacted at the phone number provided and placed on speaker to address the commission during the meeting time. Okay, at this time the regular meeting, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Susan, would you like to?
Sure. Ready, salute.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fathers, we come before you today, we pray for your guidance, for your wisdom. I pray, Lord, for your blessing upon this city. As we come to plan these events and things that are going on in our city, we pray that you would guide this council, that you would just begin to pour blessing out over our city. We pray for each and every one of our planning, uh, meeting council members. And we pray, God, that you would bless them with wisdom and accretest them, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. This is the time for the roll call.
Chairman Orrin.
Here.
Vice Chair Livingston.
Here.
Commissioner Manor.
Here.
And Commissioner Lykan and Commissioner Miller are absent.
All right, thank you. Item number one on the agenda, citizens' requests and public comments. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the commission on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the commission from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Commission may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit comments to five minutes. Have we anyone wishing to address? Please come forward. Hello?
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, how are you today?
Good.
Good. You need to give us your name and address.
Okay, my name is Kathleen Johnson. I live at one twenty-eighth Center Street in Taft.
Okay.
I wanted to, um, ask the, uh, commission to consider revisiting, um, color ordinances for paint in Taft. Uh, I know that the commission did several years ago and decided not to move forward with setting any kind type of ordinance, but there have been some very loud colors in some neighborhoods. Um, I drove down Third Street towards Calvin and just in that area, there were just two very, very, um, very loud colors in those neighborhoods. I think they could be, uh, bring property, um, values down. And I know on my block, on the one hundred block of Center Street, somebody is painting their house bright orange. So I think it's, it's time that the commission revisit that issue. And that's all I have to say.
Is that it, Kathy?
That's it.
Um, I know we visited that and I don't think we drew a conclusion, however, we did make some, um, comments on the, uh, business district area that, um, but you had, it's a pet peeve of mine, so thank you for reminding us.
Okay, all right. I know that when I lived in Ojai for eight years and I was a homeowner and a business owner, there were very strong, um, ordinances there which maybe are a little bit extreme, but I think Taft could, could use having some type of ordinance.
All right, I, I will personally drive by these addresses, this neighborhood and see what you're saying. I, I own property there too.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Okay, is that it for our public comments? Extent of them? Okay, that moves us to item number two, which is the minutes from the February third meeting, which will be dispensed with because we don't have the, uh, members available to approve or disapprove. So now going on to item number three, Planning Commission Review, Zoning Ordinance Amendment Number two zero two-one dash zero three. Mr. Staples?
Uh, yes, thank you Chairman Orrin. Um, as you see here, as you mentioned, um, proposed zoning ordinance amendment number twenty-two-one dash zero-three. Keep in mind, this is just an information item only, but it is dealing with an item that if you can believe it, it's been well over a year since we started the discussion regarding, uh, recycling facilities.
Yes.
Granted, we had an application, so we kinda held off till we addressed that, but, um, now we're back with this item. Just to go over some of the past of this, um, back in November twenty nineteen, Chairman Orrin, he did, uh, make a request to review and discuss our ordinance regarding these facilities. And then, um, a similar request came down from the council, so we had a, uh, a presentation before them on November nineteenth of twenty nineteen. And then we brought that same presentation to the commission, the following commission meeting on December fourth of twenty nineteen. And we went over the different sections of Section six dash twelve dash twenty-two, which you'll see in the draft, uh, ordinance to review and comment on later, um, that it, um, you provided comments and direction and some, uh, preferred zoning locations and distances that you would like to see with that. Um, in that section, you'll see that it addresses, uh, small vending machines, small collection facilities that are allowed in all three commercial zones. The larger facilities and the actual processing facilities are allowed with a condition use permit in the industrial zone. Um, and then, uh, chapters five and six, which are, uh, address our commercial and industrial zone districts. Um, there may be some, uh, I didn't do much amending actually, but I've left the reverse vending machines just in case they come back in favor. Um, with really small businesses, folks that deal with vending, both actual vending, if they want to get into the reverse vending, but those are starting to go by the wayside. Um, but the, um, uh, draft before you covers both Section six dash twelve dash twenty-two and then, um, the chapter five and six, uh, land use tables, um, for the commercial industrial zone districts. And I'm gonna go over just a couple items briefly, which were the, um, some of the key items um, on page two of the draft ordinance that you have. Um, it's where it begins with Section six dash twelve dash twenty-two. Um, the main thing there is, uh, um, I called out in subsection B there that, uh, the specifically large recycling facilities, cause it's called out further in the section and then separating out the processing facilities from large collection, cause there is a difference between the collectors and the ones that would actually process and crush and, um, um, process for shipment to another location that handles the actual recycling process. Um, the first indication of some of the distance, uh, requirements um, is on page three of the draft resolution at the very bottom, addressing small collection facilities. Um, I put in there for now five hundred feet and I, I'll have the, uh, maps that are in your staff report up on the screen in a minute, so we could kinda see it in a larger scale to go over what those distances mean. Uh, but, um, I have that in for now, five hundred feet for the small facilities, which was the type we saw on the application a couple months ago. Um, then, uh, on page five of the ordinance, the, I think the key, uh, deletion there was, uh, oh, well, two, actually page four, you'll see there's a big chunk of, uh, area that's, uh, crossed out, which was getting a little too much in the weeds about how much parking, uh, parking area or additional parking area could be lost with a facility. Um, the needing parking studies and all that. I felt that the table, um, below that was sufficient that if you had a large enough shopping center that had a couple hundred, uh, um, spaces to spare, allowing for additional spaces in, in addition to the five that's allowed, wouldn't be that much of a burden for the facility. Now, if they wanted something larger, that's when we start getting in the weeds about the appropriateness of it. Um, then on page five, I scratched out the whole subsection K that used to discuss, uh, twenty-four hour containers. Um, as much as that would be a convenience, I think that's one of the early nuisances of, um, the small facilities, the, all the replanets that maybe had a reverse vending as the overnight option for folks. Um, and a lot of those went away and then eventually the replanets went away, so, um, having a twenty-four hour facility, uh, or even a container available is probably not the best, um, idea, um, if there's any nuisance issues with recycling. Uh, page six at the bottom where, um, the large collection facilities are specified, um, I put five hundred feet there. But the thing is they're only allowed in industrial zones, so they're already somewhat separated from residential. So if they're already five hundred plus feet, and we'll look at the, what five hundred feet looks like in a minute, I put that there and we can grow that out if necessary. Um, and then on page eight, where it starts discussing about processing facilities, um, that's been expanded out to a thousand feet. So they're industrial zones only, but a thousand feet, um, handles a lot of probably what would be some noise or other nuisances that people would notice, uh, with something like that. And then the only other main ones are, uh, changes are on page eleven where you see a portion of the, um, permitted uses table for, um, chapter five for commercial zone districts. Um, there's been an adjustment where the only thing that's just generally permitted would be the vending machines, so long as they follow the standards. Um, small collection facilities are only conditionally permitted in the general commercial, um, cause there are some general commercial locations that might be ideal or something that the commission would consider for approval. But mixed use, which is mostly around downtown and then downtown commercial, which is mostly downtown. I, I think it would go without saying that you probably would not like that there, nor would the businesses or residents in those areas. So, and then the large collection facilities, just to be clear, have the Xs in all three commercial zone locations to direct people to look to the industrial zone. And then page twelve of the resolution covers the industrial zone locate, uh, locations. And, um, again, the vending machines are permitted, but any other facilities conditionally permitted following the standards that are outlined and whatever we iron out beyond that. Now, I'm gonna see if I could pull up the maps and forgive our touchpad here, it's a little touchy. So, um, you have in your staff reports, uh, three maps, a five hundred foot radius, a thousand foot radius from the existing J and D recycling location. So, um, I was able to draw the circle around them, five hundred feet out in every direction. Same with a thousand feet and then what I was mentioning about the, um, example for general commercial is the Kmart site. Uh, the backside of that will be facing, although there's nothing immediately there, the next zone over is industrial. So a, uh, five hundred square foot collection site there, that's facing that and no other residential pretty much in that direction is possibly a site you'd consider. We just haven't had an application for that yet. So as you can see here, this blue radius, um, doesn't quite hit Hillard to the east, where the closest the residential is further south of that, but then when you get to one thousand feet, it clips some of the first houses that are on Rainier and Hillard. So that's the kinda scale of what one thousand feet would do and that's not even a quarter mile.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, so one thousand feet seems probably good for the processing and beyond, cause that would have to be something that's closer to maybe the, uh, GPS property and westward is where a processing facility would be. And you have all the industrial in between, you have Sandy Creek separating the housing from that, so there's no direct road access either. So that's something to consider if you, um, if the one thousand's sufficient for processing facilities and if you want to increase either the five hundred foot distances I've proposed for the, um, small or large collection where all they do is collect, put in a container and the containers get shipped off. If the five hundred feet works for you on that, we can stick with that, or if you're wanting to push either one out to a thousand, this is what it would look like for a thousand feet. And then a thousand feet for Kmart. So, the one thing there too, there's also, uh, if you wanna call it geography considerations, if you will, if somebody was going to Kmart. Uh, the closest residential is either west to the south Taft residence, but you have Highway thirty-three, uh, the large church property, the trail, the museum, a trucking company, and a thousand feet doesn't even touch the First Street in South Taft to the west.
Yeah, I, I'm seeing, is it? That's the church property at the corner, that's.
It captures the church property, um, but the first residential on General Petroleum Avenue or even along Wood isn't captured by the thousand feet. And this is based on, I picked a center location. It actually, I selected the, um, Dollar Tree property and drew a thousand feet around that.
Okay.
So I doubt we would approve anything that's out by the highway that would push that radius further out if we were holding that thousand foot distance as a development standard. But that shows you what a thousand feet is. And it doesn't even, it barely even gets towards the, uh, airport site, so that wouldn't affect the airport, airport addition as a nuisance.
Right.
There's enough, like I said, geol- uh, geographical features, a major road, an airport, little Sandy Creek Airport Road, and then you're at a house and that's probably pushing two thousand feet before you hit the homes that are on Garrett and, uh, Lucard, San Antonio on the Airport Edition. So I wanted, cause we threw out some numbers of distances in the prior meetings, I just wanted to give you a graphic to show what a thousand feet was. This is a quarter mile or under a quarter mile.
Right.
So these are the three maps that are in your, um, staff report. Um, you can reference those, uh, as we, uh, discuss any, um, changes you, uh, may see would be needed in, uh, what I'm proposing here for the recycling facilities. Um, I also have a small, uh, copy of our zoning map to show, uh, the red areas are your general commercial and the gray areas are your industrial. Um, I don't have it up here, but it's in your staff report there, so. Um, I will end my presentation right there and I'll leave it to a Q and A between us on, uh, um, any other specifics you're looking for, um, with regard to the ordinance and any other nuisances you're looking to, uh, um, address with this.
Mark, I have a question. I heard that, uh, Kmart facility has been sold.
Yes.
Do we know who purchased it?
We do, not to get into it too much, but, uh, we do have someone, um, splitting the building up to put a grocery store in thirty thousand square feet of it.
Very good, thank you.
So that, uh, at least gets us, not to get too much into, I believe the applicant that had a proposal before was talking about convenient zone type stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know how that works on the operator's side. I think you have to kinda get into it to get a lot of the info about benefits one way or the other of distance from a store kinda thing. Um, but the convenience zone is more if there isn't a facility within a store that produces CRV, the, um, California Recycling.
Value?
Value. Um, uh, the store has to provide it. So if J and D ceased to exist, uh, Albertsons, at least Albertsons would have to start collect, uh, receiving recyclables from us here in Taft.
In other words, they should be already.
They should be prepared, if not already doing it. Um, and that is a possible location as well, I know. Um, that's, uh, kind of in the middle of town, but also there, there isn't a lot of residential. You do have the, uh, ball fields, if you place them on the backside. Is that a, uh, something we don't think works together when it comes maybe to a small facility? So that's why I did leave, uh, the small facilities, uh, as conditionally approvable in general commercial, cause it's mostly those, uh, properties that are on the west edge of town and then the east edge of town like Kmart.
And, and you centered the thousand foot in the, on the J and D facility, right?
Yes. Sorry to see it's, uh, it's essentially the first properties on your left, um, also where ten percent firearms is.
Okay. So if we had a thousand foot radius, it wouldn't be allowed?
For, um, I only have a thousand on processing.
And don't they do processing?
I, actually, I'm not sure. They've existed so long, I have not gone back to their old files of what they got approved for.
Okay.
Um.
I mean, they may not, I mean, they just may collect a whole heck of a lot.
Yeah, and maybe that, that is another thing we can look into as far as, um, addressing the light and heavy, cause there is a, a distinction in that section, uh, both in size of the property and then, um, some of the operation involved with it. So if it's just happens to be large, but it still just does all things container collection and maybe does minimal, um, uh, compacting to create, you know, transportable bricks of material.
Yeah, that's basically what they.
Are we considering that a heavy processing facility or is it just taking our containers and making it, uh, more efficient to get off the property? Um, I'm not sure of the detail of their operation of how they're transporting off the site to whoever buys their, uh, material. But if you like, I, I can address that before we really move forward on approving something.
I'm just curious, I mean, because
There could be some in the weeds stuff to figure out.
I wouldn't like to be interfering with something that's been existing for
Right.
a very long time. And it's frankly, one of the few places that's actually not, not particularly bad. If it got worse, if noise was an issue, I would rather address it through a, through issues related to noise than adjust the distance.
Right.
Well, J and, J and D kinda sets a good example for others, cause they keep the place clean as far as I can see. I mean, they're, they're reasonable. I mean, it's, it's recycled disposables really, but they're with the CRV, but there's not a lot of stuff blowing around their place or drifting across the highway. But I think that's the operator's, uh, good intentions for the community. Um, at the Kmart site, a thousand feet would be at approximately the, uh, building line of the existing Kmart and where the Dollar Tree, is that Dollar Tree?
I utilize the, uh, rectangle of the, um, footprint of the Dollar Tree.
Okay.
At creating that shape.
Okay, so th- that's the current active business and, um.
I, I went more for center of the property.
Sure.
So you could shift north and south depending on, um, if the center starts building out and what building
Okay.
the facility would go behind.
And I barely recall ever seeing a standalone recycling vending style machine.
It's been a number of years.
Yeah, okay.
But I wouldn't pu- put it past, uh, the next small startup trying to figure out how to make it
A profitable spot, yeah. It's.
But the, uh, replanet, small two container behind the facade similar to, um, the gentleman who brought a, uh, application to us a couple months ago.
Right.
It's kinda as eighty, ninety percent of the norm. And then the rest of it is made up of, uh, larger J and Ds and the ones that actually do a lot of the cr- um, hard crushing into the, um,
Yes.
blocks to ship off.
The few I've gone to over in Bakersfield have usually had a maximum of two container car, uh, container boxes to hold all of their equipment and store stuff and then that was, that was it.
Yeah.
A good number of them have closed also.
Yes.
Yes.
And, uh, we can get in, like I was, uh, mentioning a minute ago, we can get into the weeds about, uh, maybe defining more what the large facilities can do and then what causes them to become a processor. Uh, I think a lot of that, um, also includes things beyond the beverage containers, cause the CRV is strictly your, um, aluminum, glass, plastic, soda bottles, milk bottles, and up to some of the unique stuff of, um, maybe detergents and things like, some do collect, some don't. Uh, but beyond that, who does the cardboard, who does the white paper, who does the shredding and maybe recycling of that? Um, uh, we could get more specific and start separating what goes commercial, small locations, what is all processing, um, amount of equipment that could be ca- um, creating noise, um, issues. Um, we, it's still, the code is still somewhat general in the form I have it here. So if you wanna get it a little more specific with some of those materials, we can, beyond the containers, we can.
I, I think that what, what I heard you saying the entire time was CRV products.
That, that's the majority of it and that's probably what we'll be getting.
I don't think we've ever been able to recycle like a detergent bottle in this area, except when Bob has had the, uh, containers down, which he's moved inside his property now, which is inconvenient, but it sure makes the area cleaner down there. Um, and I, I believe they're gonna continue to do that. I haven't heard that they are not. So that, that suits the needs, so. I don't know. Uh, a thousand feet to me, uh, on the map looks reasonable unless I live at a thousand and one feet adjacent to where it's going, so that's, you know, the, the proximity to my house makes me think differently. So I think that we'll get community feedback from this and the council review before we actually send it on to them.
Yeah, uh, this is, you know, not anything to act on today. We can, uh, maybe do one more meeting if it, uh, helps, uh, bring in a couple more people to get comment, um, on this, uh, and how they feel about it. We had the comments from the folks near, uh, Pilot Plaza that generally states that the, the, and there's more immediate residential, uh, to that shopping center for sure.
Yes.
Uh, where we're gonna get the comments like we did. Uh, whereas Kmart is separated in a way, even the backside of Albertsons is separated. If there's a concern with its closeness to the bicycle ball fields, I don't know if there would be. Um, uh, it would also include the, um, um, I guess we call it the Popeye's Chicken property, side of the street is general commercial as well. That gets close to the Rainier properties and all that, so that could probably, um, leave that property out as far as distances are current concerned, but if something's on the backside of Albertsons, I don't know if that's something. leave that property out as far as distances are current concerned, but if something's on the backside of Albertsons, I don't know if that's something that you would uh um consider for the smaller.
The 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 small little collection.
Little five hundred square foot fenced in area. Because there's room in that uh shipping backside of the building that could, you could tuck things away. It'd be visible if you go down Santa Medio much to, you know, do banking or
Right.
maybe up and down tenth, if you notice.
Yeah, I don't think I'd have a problem with being back there, to be honest with you.
Because that's a general commercial location.
Yeah.
But when you go to the ball fields, that gets, that area gets crowded, you know, when when there's uh activity, tournaments or something like that. Um so looking at this map that you have up there, um where the Kmart was, if we were to go to two thousand feet, we would um be all the way over to what, Olive or so?
Probably.
And then we would certainly be up on um
The first couple of houses.
Lucard, probably, and the airport addition area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think two thousand feet's way too much.
I do too.
Well, Dave Nor lives there, so we have to.
Well, that's where.
It's it's going to be close to uh fifteen hundred probably, isn't it, to get to Dave's place?
Yeah, to to get to Kern Street, actually, I I think from what you said about the map, it's fifteen hundred feet from where you had the center of that uh to plot this map.
Right.
Uh and uh honestly, if you have a good operator and it's a thousand or fifteen hundred feet, I don't see an issue. But as I said, it's not being placed near my home.
If we look at um, I mean, the the issue would be only significant if you had to move the location to the um north of Gardner Field. When you start moving across Gardner Field, then you're going to be broad enough to start hitting, I think,
Yeah.
some of the housing. You still have the airport in between them.
We're prob- we're probably four hundred, that property you chose as center of that
Yes.
circle, it's probably still four hundred feet from Gardner Field Road.
Right, and so what I can do, if you want, is um we can, uh I could bring back this and we could have a bit of a what is the real distance kind of exercise, and I can lasso mul- multiple properties into like one shape and then do a thousand feet from the edges, so even though we probably wouldn't agree on anything right on one nineteen, but just to really push what is the limits of a five hundred foot, thousand foot type uh distance if we went all the way to the edge of properties.
It might be interpreted that the parcel perimeter is the place from which you measure the thousand feet.
Right, rather than to the actual location of the.
Rather than the location of the recycling itself, it would be the perimeter or boundary of the property.
Right, and and I want to give as exaggerated a distance as I can for you to see it and so we can relate.
I appreciate that, the the thousand feet does help um get a picture of it. It uh does that encompass the um museum property?
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
It barely gets on to the trucking company, that's just beyond um the museum.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'm I'm definitely mostly concerned about residential, I'm
Yes.
not really concerned about commercial or um some of the other things that.
With an ordinance of this nature, um wha- well, the development of any property for this would engage the mailing list of uh nearby residents, unless we adopt a thousand and there's no one in it.
Yeah, you actually brought up a a good thought there of that uh we normally just follow the state minimum of the three hundred foot for noticing.
Right.
But if you want somewhere in this, uh when we notice for these specific projects, that the noticing can be those that are captured within the distance. And both the residents can have their opportunity to speak if they're on that edge of the five or five hundred or a thousand feet. They can, you can hear from them, they can
Most definitely.
communicate with you and uh.
I I think I think the um it would be in the city's best interest to
Yes.
make that part of the resolution that would, they would be notified.
Okay.
Rather than using the three hundred foot dimension.
Okay, so for for our next meeting, uh include the expanded noticing and then we'll, I'll get you more maps that really kind of push the try to capture the most likely uh property locations that somebody would look at with Kmart, Albertsons. And I'll even um do some with the existing industrial that's just beyond Kmart. Because that's still uh within a similar distance to residential to the north side. Um the folks on the Enterprise Commerce where PD is and all that, if they ever get reused as a
Is that the now building there?
This one here, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Built a couple of years ago.
So if you were going to ex- expand the notice area, would it be, since this is a thousand foot, would you just throw three hundred feet onto it, so it'd be thirteen hundred?
No, it just, this would be um the whatever radius you land on, so five hundred for small, thousand for big, thousand for processing. Whoever is captured in that, residential, commercial, whoever it is, they would be notified.
Gets a notice?
Yeah, that they, this would be a unique uh project that gets um expanded noticing beyond the three hundred feet, so.
Right.
Okay, I I think that's a good idea.
And and I'll try to include it into the chapter as is, uh be specific about it, and then I'll come back with more maps. So you can see um what gets captured uh with various areas. I gave you just a couple of examples here, but I I'm sure we'd want to look at um the full landscape of Taft to see where our opportunities are.
Definitely.
As 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 I kind of look at it now, other than way out on Gardner Field Road, in terms of industrial, this is really the only location that we're covering now that actually could handle it and frankly, I don't know that there'd be another business that wanted a site right next to J and D already existing there, so.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, that was um, I think the cleanup of the the strikings of the and modifications were made, they got rid of the things that seemed a bit redundant or um out of date.
For sure.
So, nice job. Okay, that moves us to, you just bear with me, um the planning director report.
Thank you, Chairman Orin, uh three items. Uh the first is actually something that might address uh what Ms. Johnson brought up earlier in that um the two grant um projects that will be processing as one essentially. The RFP is out, um we have a deadline for prospective consultants to get um their questions to us about anything needing to be clarified about what our project entails is due tomorrow. We're already getting some folks reaching out. Um I had to mail the copies out because we are kind of in a corner of Kern County that a lot of these firms probably haven't heard of.
Don't even know where we are.
Um uh so but we're get, starting to get response and then about two weeks from now is the due date for them to actually submit their proposals uh based on that and the, one of the key items, it's more residentially focused, but we can address the um um colors as a design standard for residential. So that is something that um a number of years ago, the commission brought up, was trying to tackle with all that, but we did not really reach a r- resolution there.
Right.
But the support of two to five additional planners from one of these firms um encompassing how to process or maybe attract developers with better, quicker, more distinct processing timelines, uh quicker environmental reviews, things like that is what the goal is of these grants, so. It, the details in that can include uh colors, which is definitely was the original impetus of doing something with our downtown specific plan. But now that we have these two grants, one is a hundred and sixty-five thousand, the other sixty-five thousand, trying to combine them together for a total two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar project. Um so we're hoping to get the proposals uh mid, late March. Hopefully have somebody selected at a meeting in April and hit the ground running to uh at least get a lot of the data collection done through the summer and hopefully when we're able to have face-to-face workshops or charrettes or whatever we can do to get council commission and the public's input really of what they're wanting. Hopefully later this summer will be when that happens or into the fall. And then uh we're hoping to have a lot of it wrapped up by June of next year, so. Uh you're definitely going to welcome as part of the process for that. We'll try to utilize this room or uh the transit center if we're able to congregate more again and uh get this process done and get some uh definitive colors uh lined out for uh certainly residential.
Yeah.
Uh and definitely our downtown, so.
We we had discussed that at length and it's one of those things where it's important because it does affect property value.
Yeah, so we'll address that in those two projects, uh because one does address downtown, the other is a citywide um thing, so we can maybe if we like what maybe is trying to be applied downtown, we could try to apply it citywide, so. One uh one project can benefit the other, so.
We don't want to, we don't want to be like Irvine telling you, no, it's going to be beige.
Beige and peach.
And then and here, it's, this is the color, you know, for your building, I I've.
And do it like four, you can have it for any color you want.
I've had that experience.
Yes. So um second item is uh Mayor Nor mentioned it uh last night, Kern County eh uh Board of Supervisors is having a special meeting on Monday to address the latest revisions to their oil and gas ordinance. Um they've gone through the process again, gone through environmental process again, and they're ready to um, I believe, adopt it with the revisions based on the challenges that came from the first go-around. And they're doing it at a special meeting Monday, this is not part of their regular session on Tuesday. Uh but it is at nine AM like a regular Board of Supervisors meeting. You'll have to go to their site and see uh what the provisions are for allowing people in or how they're going to handle public comment. Um if you're wanting to completely social distance, definitely utilize like our process where send a comic to their um board clerk so it's on the record, support, against, fixes, whatever. Um uh go ahead and go that way and then otherwise check their website for how to attend in person if you have the time on Monday, March eighth.
Okay.
And then the third item, uh since it's March, doesn't seem like it's Fourth of July, but it is the application period for the firework stands for Fourth of July. So anybody who's involved with that, please uh follow um or see the application on the city website, follow the directions on that for submittal and get those in by the end of the month so we can uh select somebody in April and get everybody moving um into April and May. Because the key review is not just ours, but these folks have to go through a fire department review as well.
Right.
So that's why we do this so early. Um so the application is available for all the different nonprofit groups, service clubs and whatnot to uh get their application in. And that's it for my director's report.
All right, thank you. This leads us to item five, Mr. Epperson, our city attorney.
No statement.
No statements. All right. Commissioner comments?
I have none.
None, Jerry?
Nope, not today.
Um I have a personal one, my uh uh in my family, my only brother passed away unexpectedly yesterday afternoon. And uh makes one um contemplate that you should make contact and be close with the ones that you want to be close with. Take advantage of it, don't let the opportunity slip. So um that's it for my comments. And I guess we're going to i- identify Jerry as our representative to the next council meeting.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah. Then it's a unanimous decision, it will be Jerry.
Definitely.
Okay. Last item will be a um a motion for adjournment.
How about the motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, that carries on a three zero. All right, thank you, Mr. Staples, and uh by the thirty-first, huh, on the.